In our city council meeting. Call roll to confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdellgawad. Councilmember Boehner.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman absent. Councilmember Hubach.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Kerkoff.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have Bill 3061 declaring the April 7th election results. It's emergency reading. I want to entertain a motion to dispose of this.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to dispose of that bill. And I apologize, I don't have it in front of me to read the bill number itself.
You would like to approve Bill 3061?
Yes.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3061. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have a second reading of Bill 3061. Have it by its entirety?
The second reading of Bill 3061 in its entirety. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri declaring the results of the April 7, 2015 election and declaring this bill as an emergency. Whereas a general municipal election was held on April 7, 2015, and whereas Section 9.3 of the Raymore City Charter calls for the council to declare the election results at the next regularly scheduled council meeting following the election. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, it is hereby found and determined by a canvas of the voters by the City Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri at the election held on April 7, 2015, in conformity with the Comprehensive Election Act of 1977, revised statutes of Missouri, the provisions of the Charter, and the ordinances of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Councilmember Ward 1, two-year term, candidate Kevin Kellogg. Total votes received, 153. The City Council does find that Kevin Kellogg is the candidate for councilmember from Ward 1 who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Councilmember from Ward 2, two-year term, candidate Joseph W. Burke III. Total votes received, 232. Candidate Thomas Circo. Total votes received, 150. The City Council does find that Joseph W. Burke III is the candidate for councilmember from Ward 2 who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Councilmember Ward 3, two-year term, candidate Kevin Barber. Total votes received, 223. Candidate Jennifer Boxberger, total votes received, 74. The City Council does find that Kevin Barber is the candidate for councilmember from Ward 3 who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Councilmember Ward 4, two-year term, candidate Charlene Hubach. Total votes received, 185. Candidate John Berensen, total votes received, 169. The City Council does find that Charlene Hubach is the candidate for councilmember from Ward 4 who received the highest number of votes and shall hold the office for a two-year term until a successor is duly elected or appointed and qualified according to law. Section 2, it is further found, declared, and determined that notice of said election was duly given and published in the manner provided by law and that said election was held and conducted in all respects and conformity with the Constitution and laws of the State of Missouri governing elections and subject to the provisions for charter cities. Section 3, severability. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portions shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Section 4, emergency reading. This bill is declared and authorized as an emergency and will be read in its entirety to promote the administration of government and permit the newly elected officials to begin their terms. Section 5, effective date. The effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Duly read this first time this 13th day of April, 2015. Be it remembered that the above ordinance was approved and adopted the 13th day of April, 2015 by the following vote.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3061 declaring the April 7, 2015 election results.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3061. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Move on to the oath of office.
We'll begin with the oath of offices in chronological order of wards. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kevin Kellogg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office to which I have been elected.
To the office of which I have been elected.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And all ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And all ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And that I will discharge my official duties.
And that I will discharge my official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
Congratulations. You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Joe Burke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office for which I was elected.
For the office for which I was elected.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And all of the ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And that I will faithfully discharge my official duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
My official duties.
My official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I was elected.
For which I was elected.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kevin Barber.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office to which I have been elected.
To the office of which I have been elected.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And all of the ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And all the ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And that I will faithfully discharge my official duties.
I will faithfully discharge my official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I have been elected.
For which I've been elected.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Charlene Hubach.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
I possess the qualifications prescribed by law.
For the office to which I have been elected.
For the office to which I have been elected.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And of the State of Missouri affecting charter cities.
And all the ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And all the ordinances of the City of Raymore.
And that I will faithfully discharge my official duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge my official duties.
In the office of councilmember.
In the office of councilmember.
For which I have been elected.
Oh, you get the going-away prize here. Jason Boehner, an appreciation and recognition for your dedicated service and the commitment of the City of Raymore, Missouri as a councilmember for Ward 3, 2013 through 2015. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council. Usually there's a traditional five-minute length for comments. But seeing as how I've used my voice so sparingly over the last two years, I respectfully request that I be allowed to invoke Councilman Kellogg's definition of the traditional five. I'll be short, but perhaps less so than you are used to. First of all, I would like to thank my wife of 23 years. Without her, this is all meaningless. And with her, it means everything. I'd also like to thank my dad, who's in attendance tonight. And thank him for teaching me the lesson that if you don't work, you don't eat. And that when it gets tough and you fall down, you just brush it off and you get back up and you take another step forward. I'd like to thank the council. You welcomed me. You were warm and gracious and civil in all our discussions, and I deeply appreciate that. I deeply appreciate the camaraderie that I have felt as I have served with you to serve the citizens of Raymore. In our day and age of the selfie and constant social media updates, it may appear to many that the basic unit of society is without question the individual. I would like to contrast that with the idea that the basic unit of society is and always has been the family. From as far back as the beginning of written history, we can see the human desire to join and develop familial relationships. This desire can be seen in the many ways humans join themselves to one another, whether in nuclear families, work families, friendship families. In fact, the variety of families and family types are astounding. It is also clear that it is in and through these type of relationships and associations that the human race has sought for the sometimes elusive quality of happiness. This being said, I would suggest that a community, if anything, is an extended family striving for the happiness so enshrined in our country's Declaration of Independence. My purpose this evening is to focus on a few simple principles, which if followed, will be the source of much happiness among the many different kinds of families here in Raymore and increase our community's strength and prosperity. It has been said that happy and successful families are established and maintained upon the principles of respect, compassion, work, and wholesome recreational activities. These principles pump the lifeblood of a community. I would like to give the following ideas for consideration as I leave the council. First, a focus towards an entrepreneurial business incubator where a partnership between economic development, the Chamber of Commerce, and post-secondary education providers can be used as a tool to home-grow new businesses and help people with big ideas turn those goals into reality. This partnership could also fine-tune the training and education of a high-skill workforce prepared to develop, to develop either their own ideas or assist the growth of those who may shop Raymore as a desired location. This leverages the yet fully untapped skills and ideas of the community family and prepares Raymore and its younger generation to take its place among the more vibrant communities of the future as a self-generating engine of wealth and personal satisfaction. Secondly, may I also suggest a stronger focus towards developing a community-based fine and performance art program and facility. The Art Commission, in conjunction with Parks and Recreation Department and our Economic Development Office, have an opportunity to fully round out the wholesome recreational activities within the community and draw upon the talents that sometimes are overlooked in our artistic community members. Members who bring so much inspiration and vitality and thought to the quality of life we could all be enjoying. It would be a bold step toward an all-inclusive community. In addition to the increase of life quality, this idea has the potential to develop into a strong regional differentiator for the City of Raymore and bring with it the income and investment that follows when a community has engaged all her members. Thirdly and lastly, may I suggest that we more carefully consider our reaction to the development of lower-cost housing and the socio-economically disadvantaged members of our community. When a community shuns the least advantage or seeks undifferentiating homogeneity, it does so at its own peril. Communities and families by their very natures thrive on variety and the different stages of personal growth. To put it simply, we need everyone in all life stages to make community work. Just as a closed gene pool introduces mutations and malignancy, a closed community breeds discontentment and distrust. If we are exclusive in any way with a "not in my backyard" policy, the laws of reaping what you sow come into effect, and we will reap a fractured and less-rounded community family. As an architect, I have spent nearly 20 years of my professional life asking the "what-if" question. It is a question that I love. What if Raymore was a community that regardless of your socio-economic status, your life would improve if you moved here? What if you would live longer just because you lived within the city limits? What if Raymore was a community where you were valued and utilized no matter where you were in life? What if Raymore was a springboard to success? Can you imagine that? Can you see it? Is that vision different than what is today? Are there policies that can parallel the things and the principles that make your family successful? In conclusion, think family, think big, plan strategically, and be great.
And the next thing is adjournment. A short reception will be held immediately following this meeting in honor of the outgoing and newly-elected officials outside the council chambers. Everybody is invited to attend. Entertain a motion for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? We're in adjournment. Thank you. We have a roll call to confirm a quorum.
Councilmember Abdellgawad.
Here.
Councilmember Barber.
Here.
Councilmember Burke.
Present.
Councilmember Holman absent. Councilmember Hubach.
Coming in.
Absent.
She's coming in.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens.
Present.
Mayor Kerkoff.
Present.
We do have a quorum. Everybody please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, we took care of presentations and awards earlier. There are no personal appearances, so we'll move on to staff reports.
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a report this evening.
Just wanted, thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Members of council. Just wanted to update everyone. There is quite a bit of disruption out here at the entrance to City Hall. The contracts have been working over the past week excavating around the tower and exposing the footings. They started installing the resistance piers today. I would expect that that will continue throughout the week. And then, weather permitting, we seem to be in quite a wet cycle of getting things restored and concrete replaced sometime next week. That concludes my report.
Questions of staff? Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was talking to Mr. Fearborn, and he said there was some kind of a water problem there. Is that something that you've figured out? Down or underneath that thing?
We continue to chase a water leak that leaks downstairs. We think we have found what one of the sources may be, and I've been working with the building maintenance technician on that. But nothing related to this project is going to solve the issue that we have downstairs.
Come on.
Not so much a question, but a comment. Congratulate or recognize the crews that have been doing the work. When I walked up tonight, I didn't expect to see it so neat and tidy and safe of a surface to walk on. But it is recognized that it is as neat and tidy as it can be. Very surprised about that.
Thank you, Mike. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a report for community development.
Thank you. A few items this evening. First, the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission that was scheduled on April 21st has been canceled. We have no items of business that evening. In addition, that evening, Commissioner Don Myskey and myself will be at the American Planting Association Conference this year, which is held in Seattle for a number of days. But we are scheduling a planning commission meeting on May 5th, and it will be a meeting for commissioner training. Third, there is a Good Neighbor meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening here in the council chambers at 6:30 PM. There's an application requesting to modify development standards that apply to a proposed subdivision of the Good Ranch. It's referred to as Prairie View of the Good Ranch. It was approved by city council back in 2007, but has never been developed. The current property owners are looking to sell the property, and the proposed developer has a different plan in mind than what was initially approved. So it would require modification of some of the development standards that would apply to development on the property. So the first step in a rezoning process would be the Good Neighbor meeting. So that, again, is scheduled for tomorrow at 6:30. With the developer, we'll be here to present the plan and answer questions. And then, lastly, on your agenda tonight is the Monroe Street rezoning application. It's Item C under new business. That does require a public hearing. It was duly advertised for this evening, and the public was notified of it's a public hearing, but it is not identified as such on the agenda. So I just wanted to make sure that council and the mayor does identify that Item C under new business is a public hearing. Thank you.
Any questions of staff?
Thank you, Jim. I would ask Mr. Mustine, Parks and Recreation Director, to make a report for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a quick update of what's been going on in Parks and Recreation over the past month. Superintendent Rulo was notified that City Raymore, for the second year row, is a Tree City USA. So that's a great accomplishment for our staff. We are currently accepting applications and conducting interviews for several seasonal and part-time employees through the Parks Department and the rec side, through summer camp and concessions and things of that nature. We're moving into our busy season as far as outdoor sports, summer camp, athletics, things of that nature. So lots of stuff going on. The restrooms are open for the season and at all the shelters and the concession stands. And this weekend, we have the Jog With Your Dog event located at the Public Works. This is an event that benefits the animal control shelter, and that is this Saturday. So those are some main highlights. My staff's provided a written report for you as well.
What time does Jog With Your Dog?
Jog With Your Dog is from, I believe, at 10 o'clock. And it is stationed there at the Public Works facility right by the animal control. And as this is a fundraiser, there is a fee associated with it.
Any questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. I would just add the schedule for next Monday night's work session. We have three items on the agenda at this time. Builder erosion control training program from Mr. Crass, and a code revision to require training for builders relative to erosion control. This is all a part of our new EPA standards that we're putting into place. And we will be bringing the water and sewer rate recommendations, the annual review that we do in work session that's then followed by a public hearing at a later council meeting. Those are the three items currently on the schedule, and those conclude staff reports, sir.
Any questions of staff? Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. I want to entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include Item A, city council minutes for March 23, 2015, and Item B, approving and accepting the legends at Raymore public water main improvement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to unfinished business. Let's see. Second reading of Bill 3057, please, by title only.
The second reading of Bill 3057 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Brummel Lawn and Landscape, LLC, to provide lot mowing services for code enforcement purposes.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3057.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3057 in a ward of contract for lot mowing services.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3057. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have a second reading of Bill 3058 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3058 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Orr Wyatt Streetscapes for the 58 Highway Entrance Improvements Project, City Project Number 15-203-201, in the amount of $12,888.80, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3058.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3058 in a ward of contract for the 58 Highway Entrance Improvements.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3058. Is there any discussion? All in favor? And Abstein? Oh, okay. In that case, unanimous four. And I have the second reading of Bill 3059 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3059 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the cities of Belton, Raymore, Peculiar, and Pleasant Hill for joint bidding of street improvements.
I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3059.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3059 for the joint bidding agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill 3059. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I have the second reading of Bill 3056 by title only, please.
The second reading of Bill 3056 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 545 Property Maintenance Code of the Raymore City Code.
We'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3056.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3056, Property Maintenance Code Amendment to parking lot maintenance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3056. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I voted against this last time it was up for the first reading, and I was kind of 50/50 on which way I should go on this, how I felt about it. And I've read over this several times, and even up till today, I'm, I'm still kind of weary on it. I have come to the decision that I'm going to be in opposition of this, and I'll explain some of my reasons. I'm going to remain consistent in my opposition, but with a lot more clarity in my own mind, and so I can sleep at night saying that what I did is fair and just in, in, in this soul. Section B, where it's, where we're speaking out as far as the new language, parking spaces, access aisles and parking lots and driveways shall be kept in proper state of repair and maintained free of hazardous condition. I agree with this. This, this I do agree with. But you get down in here, and there's seven, seven bullets underneath that, where I kind of think it's subjective to a person interpreting it, and not very definitive to a person that is trying to abide by the, the code. First problem that I have with it is vegetation shall not be allowed to grow through the concrete or asphalt surface. I would be all in favor of this if we, as a city, required that upon ourselves on our own sidewalks and streets, but we don't. And if anybody needs any proof, just walk outside and see. Another place that I have issue with, kind of on this, on the same thing, all pavement areas shall be maintained to prevent accumulation of water thereon. Same, same justification there, too, is that I believe we've got pavement surfaces that, that hold water, and unless we, as a city, are willing to step up to our own standards that we're requiring on our business owners, I can't support that. Then, number seven is, is where I have my most issue. Parking spaces shall be clearly marked on the pavement surface using paint or other marking devices approved by the city. Such paving markings shall conform with the parking plan that was approved by the city and shall be maintained in a clearly legible condition. Again, I think that's subjective to the person divvying out the requirement, and very vague to the person that has to live up to the requirement. This doesn't speak to, maybe it does vaguely, but I don't see where it, where it speaks specifically, or in the previous code, that even our handicap signs that are painted on the driveways be legible. There's been many times that, that I pulled into a parking lot where I know it's parking only for handicap, only to see that the, the, the insignia, the logo that's painted on the, the spot itself is, is not legible. I just have some real issues with that. If, if we, as a city, are not willing to, to live up to our own standards, I don't see how I can expect us to put those same requirements on, on the business owners or the property owners. I, I think this is a good step into improving some of our lots, but again, they're not our lots. They are private property. There are avenues for people to rectify their problems with those properties. You know, I, I've heard of how deplorable the Wendy's parking lot was, and I mean, no disrespect or slander to the good business owners that we have here, and I just named one out, Wendy's. They did have a bad parking lot. They have rectified it. And in my mind is that if I am subjected to one of our area businesses having a parking lot, or a sidewalk, or trees hanging so low that I have difficulty going there, I have the choice to not go there and register my complaint with the, the business owner. I don't think the best route of rectifying a problem is through legislation. Sometimes it is, but in this case, I, I, I don't think that's the case, at least for myself. So I'm going to remain consistent tonight, and I, and I'm just letting you know that for what, as much time as I'm taking up, these are the reasons why. I'm being honest with myself, I'm being honest with the community, I'm being honest with staff and the business owners, and that's where I'm at. I'll let the chips fly where they do. And I'll sleep well tonight. Thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion? We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? There's one in opposition, seven, six in favor. Motion carries. Move on to new business, selection of Mayor Pro Tem. Entertain nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Ms. Abdelgawad for Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I enter Derek Morehead as the nominee for Mayor Pro Tem.
Any other nominations? We have two nominations for Mayor Pro Tem. All those for Abdel?
I'll read each one if that would be easier.
Okay, yeah.
Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Myself.
Councilmember Barber. This is the vote for Mayor Pro Tem. Nominations were for Abdelgawad and Morehead. Are you abstaining?
No.
Councilmember Burke. Councilmember Holman. Absent. Councilmember Hubach.
Morehead.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Abdelgawad.
Councilmember Morehead. Councilmember Stevens.
Derek Morehead.
That's five for Derek Morehead, two for Councilmember Abdelgawad.
Okay. Mr. Morehead, you're Mayor Pro Tem again. See if you can get it right this time. All right. Next thing is liquor license application for Freedom Stop. Public hearing. I'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, sir. I'll call in the city clerk.
Thank you. Lori O'Malley, owner of Freedom Stop, has filed an application for a liquor license for a restaurant located at 505 East Walnut to the space adjacent to Freedom Stop. The public hearing was properly advertised in the Raymore Journal for this meeting. The city clerk does find that the applicant has met city code requirements and recommends approval to the council. Approval by a majority of the city council is required. In addition, approval to serve liquor is also subject to state requirements. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience. Shall council have any questions of her?
Questions? Thank you. It's a public hearing. I'll ask for anybody who'd like to come forward. Keep your comments under your five minutes.
Good evening. Lori O'Malley, 431 Pinnacle Drive, Raymore, Missouri. And we are obviously here. They are requesting a liquor license for the space adjacent to the convenience store, and they, it'd be the same business. However, we would, we're requesting the buy the drink liquor license for the restaurant portion of the business. So if anybody has any questions, happy to answer them. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the liquor license, license application for Freedom Stop Restaurant.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the liquor license application. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next one is Monroe Street, which is also a public hearing. We have the reading of Bill 3060 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3060 by title only. In ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the zoning map from R1/0OT, Single Family Residential, Original Town Overlay District, to R3A/OT, Multiple Family Residential, Original Town Overlay District, all in lots nine through 16 inclusive, Block 20, Town of Raymore, a subdivision in Raymore Cass County, Missouri.
This requires a public hearing, so we'll open the public hearing by asking for a staff report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll call Mr. Catterett.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, with your permission, if we could start out the report, have the applicant give a brief description of the project, and then I would conclude with the staff comments. So if I could have the applicant, Mr. Salee.
My name is Randy Salee. I'm owner of RL Salee Real Estate Investments LLC, and we are the applicant for the project, asking for the rezoning. What we have proposed is a senior living project, 55 and older residents, or 13 units, that would be in three different buildings. Jim, Jim has a diagram and, and of our project layout. And we did go before the planning commission, as probably most of you are aware, and did not have a favorable, favorable vote by the planning commission. However, we wanted to go ahead and present the project to the city council. And the reasons why are because we truly believe that this project is a, a nice project and would be a positive addition to the community. We will have in our covenants and restrictions as part of this project that the residents will have a certain age restriction. All the units are two-bedroom units, which will lend themselves to my age and above residents. And we have worked with Kirk Wallace out of Columbia, Missouri, to help us design the buildings. We've also worked with Matt Slisch with Engineering Solutions to answer a few questions about stormwater. I believe that was an issue that was brought up by the residents around the project. Also, there was a lot of concern about traffic, and we've asked for, again, through Engineering Solutions, their recommendations or their analysis on how much traffic impact this project would have versus what could be built there, which would be seven single-family homes. They could be two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom homes. And, and I'd like maybe Matt to give you his analysis of what the traffic and the stormwater could, would be for the project, if you don't mind.
So it's Matt Slisch, Engineering Solutions, 50 Southeast 30th, Lees, Missouri. Yeah, so some of the comments that came about from the planning commission were related to the trip generations, or how many cars might come in and out of that facility, being that it's a, you know, a three-building complex with 13 units versus a single-family residential facility. If you were comparing, you know, just a standard multifamily apartment complex not age-restricted, it would be true that the, the amount of volume of cars or trips that would be generated by a site would increase. However, based on, you know, kind of a standard book for transportations, as the Institute of Transportation Engineering has a kind of a volume, kind of studies traffic generations. And for a senior facility, it generates around three and a half trips a day per unit, whereas a single-family resident generates about nine and a half trips a day per unit. So kind of the way this works out is if you develop this entire thing where we've laid out seven residential lots out there, you generate somewhere around 67 trips of traffic out of that site every day. Whereas if it being a senior facility where there's going to be a number of the residents that don't have cars, a number of the residents don't travel, or they use some kind of assisted transportation, there's only 46 trips generated a day. So nearly two-thirds of the trips would have been generated by just a single-family residence. You know, so while the, the building complex looks much different, obviously, than a single res, you know, family residential, the actual use of the street system is reduced by that senior element of it. The other piece we looked at was the stormwater runoff, and there's little change in stormwater runoff from this three-building complex and parking, based on the amount of green space and vegetated areas you'd have versus seven single-family residential lots that might be out there. But either way, both of the developments are going to have detention, you know, that'll store, detain, and control that stormwater runoff, in addition to, you guys also going to have the BMP requirements out there. So the site has to also provide some stormwater quality elements. So this facility would incorporate not only the reduction of increased runoff, but also the reduction in pollutants and things like that that would go into the system. Because of the site and the size, all of the stormwater detention and BMP facilities would be kind of a combination of surface and underground, and be draining, you know, northerly along Monroe Street. So, you know, again, either way, on the stormwater detention side of it, this development or the other, there's, there's an equal change, but either way, they're going to be controlled by the, by the code and what's required. So I'll be available for any questions.
The other part, comments back, or, or, I guess, things that I would like the council to consider is, is that this project will be a single ownership. We will own and maintain the project. We, we will have a vested interest in all the residents and the entire project looking nice. That will allow us to keep the project full. And, and I'm not saying that that won't happen with, when you have seven individual lots, but I think it is more likely to, to be maintained and stay consistent with, with, you know, with what we believe other projects like this are successful because they are well landscaped, they're well-maintained, and folks seem to like to stay in an area that they, you know, that they, that looks nice when they drive home each day, if they do get out and about. And again, our long-term plan is for, is for ownership, and, and if the project does get sold, it'll be sold as an entire complex. Although a small complex, it'll be sold as, as one project. Our Kirk Wallace out of Columbia, who's, has designed several of these projects throughout Missouri and throughout the, the Midwest, provides us with, kind of with the numbers, kind of the percentages of folks who live in a complex like this. And he tells us that about 80% of the residents are, are single women. There's about 10% that are typically single men, and the other 10% are couples. And, and that's probably where some of the, the lower traffic generation and the lower number of cars that will be parked there will, comes from, is, is that's the, the statistics on this kind of project. And then also typically, the residents who live in a project like this are within about a three-to- a three-to-five mile radius. There are folks who have sold a bi-level home, maybe a larger home, and they want to stay in the community, and they need a place to live, but don't want to move far away from their family and their children and things like that. We have worked, again, with Wayne Kirkoff, our land planner, who's done the layout that is presented before you tonight. The buildings are, do have four-sided architecture. They, you can't tell that the front door looks that much different than the rear elevation. They have a little, a small rear porch on the back of them, and they look nice from all four sides. And again, we've, the buildings that you see, the photographs of, are the buildings that we are going to present, to be built on the complex. So, and if there are any questions from the council, I would be happy to answer them.
Questions for the applicant? Mr. Moorehead?
Mr. Salee, as I was reviewing the stuff this week leading up to this, I had an underlying question. It's a very open-ended question. We're going from seven to thirteen, seven homes to thirteen townhome apartment. That's not a lot of difference. What motivated the change to want to go from single-family? Can you help us understand?
I would be more than happy to. If we build seven single-family homes, we look at this as a long-term investment. We build seven single-family homes, we'll subdivide the lots, we'll sell the lots along with the houses, and basically be done with that project after we build those seven homes. Honestly, we want projects like this as a long-term investment, and we would like to have that residual income for many years to come. We'd like to own not only this project, but several other projects that are going to be a very similar footprint to this. They might be, in some areas, they might be more residents or more units, in other areas, they might be less. But honestly, it's just, it's a long-term business plan that we have to own these. We feel like the market is going to continue to have a demand for fifty-five and older residents. I'm almost there myself. My mom's already there, and she would love to live in a project like this, and she really needs a project like this, although she's not in the Kansas City area. We just feel like there's going to be a long-term need for this.
Other questions? Councilmember Stevens?
I don't really have a problem with the project itself, but, you know, generally these fifty-five-plus communities, the folks that live in them are much older than that. If you have a couple that live in one of these, just from my own perspective, like one bathroom, just seems to be insufficient. You comment on that?
Single restroom, you're saying, in a two-bedroom unit? Honestly, the, again, we're depending on Kurt Wallace, who's designed many of these projects in the past. And if you look at the statistics on who the residents are, with that eighty percent being typically, it's a single widow, that is very sufficient for that person. And we're not, although, we're not encouraging children to live in this project. I think if you were, if it were a family with small children, yes, I would agree that, you know, a single restroom would be inconvenient. But they're nice units, the folks that live in them have a tendency, they will truly probably be more in the, less, you know, less will be close to fifty-five, more will probably be in their six, upper sixties, seventies, eighties. And those folks that do move into those projects also have a tendency to stay there for, you know, for a long, they don't have a tendency to move around. And again, that's why we like this type of project, too.
I just kind of, from my own standpoint, there's two of us in our household, we have four bathrooms, and I tell you, sometimes with company, that's not enough. But when you had your good neighbor meeting with the folks that lived around there, were they for this? I didn't really get that out of the packet.
Some, I think, when we had our good neighbor meeting, I think we had the folks that were more opposed to it came to the meeting. Some listened to what our project was because they just, you know, didn't, wanted to hear what the project was about. I really never took a poll and asked, you know, how many were really for it or against it. Maybe I should have, but I did not really ask that question after the, after we had our good neighbor meeting.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of curious, looking at the floor plan here and the site plan, and as you speak, fifty-five and older, and I'm looking at the floor plan, the bathroom discussion, are these going to be, is the plan to be ADA wheelchair accessible and all of that, or how, what? I'm trying to get a grasp of what I'm looking at if this is to be approved. We just, we just approved projects, I don't want to say similar, but I'll say similar, just west of here where it was sold as, you know, many of those were going to be wheelchair-accessible and with, you know, that type of, that community, that type of a person being able to be self-sufficient in their own home. Is that what we're looking at here, or can you explain a little bit better as to what I can expect?
I would not call every single unit to be ADA compliant. They will be zero, slab-on-grade units with zero entry off of the parking lot and into the home. All the doors will be oversized doors. There will be grab bars in the restrooms, and, but I would not sit here and say that every single unit would be ADA compliant.
Would I be able to ask you if a person chose to occupy one of them, that it would be able to be retrofitted rather easily for that, or?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I think, and I might ask Wayne this question, and Kurt Wallace can tell me, but I believe that we have to have a, I believe this is to meet federal guidelines, if I understood Kurt Wallace correctly, that you have to have so many units that will be ADA compliant. And I want to say it's ten percent of your units, so if you have, you know, thirteen units, I would say if you have two units that are ADA compliant, you meet that. But I'm not positive on that, on that number. So, but I believe it is, if I'm remembering it right, I think it was ten percent.
And I appreciate your candid, I won't hold you to those, but, you know, if I have more questions, I'll be sure to ask you or staff, and I appreciate you being honest with me. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go on with the staff comments this time. Before you is Bill thirty sixty. It is the proposal to rezone the tract of land. And the tract of land is one point one acres in size, and it is on the west side of Monroe Street between Plum Street and Elm Street. It's currently zoned R one, but it's got an original town overlay classification on it. The proposal is to rezone it to R three A, which is a multifamily district, but the original town overlay district will remain on the property. In your packet, I included aerial photograph to outline the property, as well as several site photographs, just trying to give you an idea of the lay of the land as it currently exists. Regarding current zoning of the property, again, the property is zoned R one OT. It is surrounded to the north, south, east, and west with zoning of R one. Any properties that are in the original town also have the original town overlay district classification. To the northwest, there is a property zoned C two commercial. It's Harmon Tire Warehouse. And then to the, to the east, we have the Hidden Meadows subdivision, and then beyond that are the multifamily units along Skyview Drive. The growth management plan, the future land use plan for this particular property does have a designation of low-density residential. I will, a little bit later, talk about some of the goal statements, though, in the growth management plan that I do believe support the resulting application. This application does require a public hearing, and it was advertised for this evening. For the record, I need to enter the notices that were sent to the adjoining property owners, the notification in the journal, our unified development code, the application that was submitted, our growth management plan, the staff report submitted to you this evening, and they also included a email that was submitted by one of the residents in the original town, Mary Thurber, who submitted that in writing prior to the planning commission meeting. Question was asked about the good neighbor meeting. It was held back in February. There were ten residents in attendance that evening. The questions seem to be centered around parking, overflow parking that may run out onto Monroe Street and Elm Street. There was also discussion about the effects the buildings would have on property values, privacy in backyard areas of existing homes. And there's also a question on the maintenance of the alleyway along the west property line, and then discussion on a location of a trash enclosure. Typically, these are information gathering meetings, so we don't usually have a read on whether individual tenants are for it against it. We simply gather their comments and forward those comments on to the commission and the I did include in your packet a couple of photographs of an existing development where the architecture and design of the buildings are almost identical to what's being proposed. So I thought it would help for the council to see the photographs. They did show the front side and rear of the buildings. This project's down in, down in Peculiar, known as the Meadow View Estates. It is a larger project. There are certainly more units as part of that overall project. There's also a clubhouse as part of that development. But the buildings are identical, so I included those photographs. You'll be able to see what they would look like there, of course, one-story buildings, again, two-bedroom, one bath. This particular project, again, proposes thirteen units, and because it has a multifamily zoning classification, it would require, if the rezoning is approved, it would require approval of the site plan by the planning commission. And is that the site plan that the development aspects, landscaping, parking, building elevations, stormwater runoff, stormwater control, stormwater treatment, would all be addressed at the time of site plan consideration? The proposal, again, being for an age-restricted facility, it is not a zoning classification, but we accomplish the age restriction through the use of a development agreement and restrictive covenants. The same process, if you recall, a few years ago, when we considered the Raymore Senior Apartment Project that was approved in Remington subdivision just north of Price Chopper. That development has not been constructed yet. They continue to work on financing for that project. But that was also an age-restricted development, and we accomplished the age restrictions through the use of the development agreement and restrictive covenants. The covenant would be, require a resident of each unit to be at least fifty-five years of age. That covenant would be recorded, and it is assignable to future owners. The only way to change that development agreement and covenant is through the approval of city council. So the property owner would not be able to just decide to change the makeup of the, or the age restriction of residents. It would have to be approved by the city, by a future city council. I did include in your packet the planning commission proposed bodies of fact that went along with their recommendation. But I kind of want to close out staff comments with some staff, the staff recommendation. Because this is one of the few applications that is coming before the, before the city council, where staff and the planning commission recommendations are not the same. It's very unusual, in fact, I think, for staff at the planning commission not to be, have the same recommendation to council. So I want to be clear about, about staff's recommendation at this time, and then I'll close out with the planning commission recommendation. The applicant is currently making an investment within the general area of this property, and I think that's significant. The Hidden Meadows subdivision, which is a single-family detached located to the east, the applicant has purchased three lots and is intending to build three detached, single-family residences. That is not an age-restricted subdivision, but most of the residents would be of age fifty-five and older. It seems to serve those individuals well. So he is making the commitment to build those homes there. At the same time of doing that, he has purchased this particular property and has specifically seen the need to provide an additional option for residents, because not everybody wants, not everybody can afford, a detached, single-family home that they have to maintain completely on the outside and maintain the yard area. So he may have some purchasers that are interested in that, but you also have individuals that want to live in this neighborhood, but need the common maintenance that would be provided in a facility such as this. Perhaps they can't own the unit, so this is a perfect option for individuals to live in the neighborhood and have maintenance-provided housing available to them. What's currently allowed for the property is important. Staff, when we looked at the particular property, we saw the ability to do six single-family homes. I think we heard the applicant indicate that they may be able to fit a seventh home on there. It would be, of course, according to what the development standards are. This is one large tract now. They would be splitting the property, not back to what it was originally platted at when the original town was platted, but they would be able to create at least six lots, it sounds like potentially seven. The development standards in the original town are different than the R one zoning, so the lots are allowed to be smaller than the R one, the typical eighty-four hundred square foot, seventy-foot-wide lots. So they are, they are allowed to be smaller in size. But what's important about that is the property is already platted. There are, initially were fifty-foot-wide lots platted through this, through this area. So if they come in and build single-family residences, that's permitted. There's no rezoning that is required to be done. So a lot of the standards that we talk about, specifically with stormwater control and stormwater treatment, are not applicable, and I think that's important. If the property is rezoned, the applicant has to abide by stormwater control and stormwater treatment. If they build detached, single-family homes, they do not have to comply with that. So I think there's a definite advantage for the neighborhood for, for that. And then if we have detached homes, of course, we'll have, each home will have a separate driveway entrance, either on to Monroe Street or Plum Street. Under the proposed rezoning, we do have an increase in density. We have an increase in the number of units. We're going from six to thirteen units. But the parking spaces are all provided off-site. The site plan that they initially submitted is conceptual, but it shows twenty-two spaces. So more than adequate to meet the parking requirements for, for the development. There would be two curb cuts on to Monroe Street. This allows for access, not only for residents, but for emergency vehicles to be able to pull in and be able to easily exit the property. Again, stormwater detention would be provided. Planning commission would have to approve the site plan. The age restriction covenants that would be in place, again, could only be changed by the approval of council. And I think it's important, the applicant talked about it, but the common maintenance that would be provided, not only of the buildings, but of the grounds. All the lot, the land area will be maintained all at one time, mowed all at one time. So I think that just the appearance overall of the property inherently is likely to be better than having six individual, single-family homes. There is certainly a dire need for senior housing apartment units in Raymore. Currently, we only have a few projects that actually offer rental apartment units for senior residents. We have Walnut Estates, which has thirty-four units, but that is a income-restricted senior development. We have Greenway Villas, which has fifty-one units, but they have a waiting list. That, that particular development is down in Lamore Estates. And then we have Foxwood Springs, which has a hundred and twenty-six units. But with Foxwood Springs, the nice thing about those units is you have a great amenity package. There are a lot of amenities in Foxwood Springs for those residents. The downside is there's, a lot of people can't afford to live there. The cost would be higher there than in a, than in a market-rate apartment that doesn't have all those amenities. I hear that a lot from calls that I get from residents that are looking for places. They love Foxwood Springs, it is a little bit more expensive. Interestingly, after the planning commission meeting, and I don't think it was associated with the recommendation of the commission, I think it was just coincidental, but I get, of course... of course, respondents from Sherri at the Raymore Chamber indicating that she's receiving more and more inquiries about fifty-five-plus communities. I know I have received a lot of requests for information on where seniors can find rental apartment units in Raymore. It's definitely a need, and increases every year. The city's involved in the Casey Communities for All Ages. The work that's being done through Mark, and this is a recurring theme at every one of our meetings, is, you know, a lot of these suburbs have a tremendous number of very nice, single-family detached homes. But the need is for senior housing and creating senior housing in our communities and finding ways to create senior housing. It is something that we certainly keep on our radar screen. We were very much a strong proponent for the rezoning of the Raymore Senior Apartments that I mentioned. I thought that project was a tremendous project for the city. I hope it moves forward. Think it was a great location. But there's a need for smaller projects in our community as well. This project meets a very specific need for providing infill housing. One of the council goals is to look at undeveloped land within our community, and this is a site in the original part of town that's never been developed. And certainly is prime for some use to go with there, and I think the one-story, you know, attached, single-family units is a, will fit into the existing neighborhood there very well. Attached, single-family, multifamily units, they do coexist with detached, single-family housing. We have a number of examples in our community. The Greenway Villas that was mentioned in Lamore Estates, we have single-family directly across the street, and we have single-family directly adjacent to that project in the Timber Trail subdivision. The Walnut Estates project that was just recently renovated, a very nice project, has single-family adjacent to the west on Woodson Drive. And then down in Sunrise, next to the Morning View subdivision, we have the Bristol Manor and the rehabilitation center on Sunrise Drive, again, immediately adjacent and to existing single-family development. So they do coexist very well. Here would be an example of having attached, single-family, and we'd have detached, single-family directly across the street and adjacent to it. But I do think that they do coexist well. I mentioned the goals. One of our challenges tonight, as I looked at preparing the staff recommendation, you know, we have council goals in your strategic plan. We have the growth management plan goals, and we have this original town neighborhood plan. They all have different goals, trying to accomplish different things, trying to find the balance between those. Your council goals, we talk a lot about creating lifecycle housing. We talk about improving the affordability of housing. The GMP talks about, you know, housing affordability and lifecycle housing as well. It talks about promoting infill housing and providing choices in housing style, size, and cost. Then we have the original town plan, which was done back in 2009, a great document, did a lot of good things for the original town neighborhood. Residents were very interested in maintaining what they had, the lifestyle that they had there. Definitely a different type of development when you look at it. You know, we don't have the curb and gutter, we don't have the storm sewers, we don't have the sidewalk system. But the residents through that plan didn't want those things. They wanted to keep things the way they were. But we did want to try to find a way to integrate housing and commercial and institutional uses as part of that plan. So the overlay district was intended to provide flexibility to the existing zoning categories with the intent to encourage that mixture of residential, commercial, and institutional uses, while ensuring their compatibility. So that's what we're trying to do as we looked at this particular project. Again, we believe the proposed rezoning will help strengthen the area in the original town. We think the impact of the new dwelling units, if age-restricted, and that's one of the conditions that staff would recommend, it really minimizes any impact that this particular development will have. The key component of this project is the age restriction. We believe through the use of the development agreements that we could hold the developer to those requirements. Again, it can only be changed by council. We think that, you know, because of the age restriction, the impacts on existing, single-family will be minimal. And staff does, again, support the request to reclassify the zoning. We do recommend approval of Bill 3060, with the one condition reading that a development agreement and restrictive covenant, restrictive covenants that limit the use of the property to residents at least fifty-five years of age shall be recorded prior to the issuance of any building permits. I do want to conclude, I left at the dais the staff proposed findings of fact, so if you do support the rezoning of the property, you can utilize the staff proposed findings. But included in your packet are the planning commission findings of fact, and again, their findings support their recommendation for denial. And I want to close by noting that, as with all the bills that are presented to council, Bill 3060 is written in the affirmative to approve the rezoning request. So that would conclude staff report this time.
Questions of staff? Kevin?
Thank you. You just said something, Jim, that caught my attention, and it's in conflict with what I thought. Can you repeat that last thing that you just said, that the bill is in affirmative of approval?
Yes, the bill is written in the affirmative, so if the motion is to approve the bill, you would be approving the rezoning.
Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions of staff? Councilmember Stevens?
If the zoning would not be approved, do they still intend to build there with other structures?
What was indicated at the Good Neighbor Meeting is yes, they do. The comment was, that question was asked, the comment, if I recall correctly, was that yes, I would build upon the property, yes.
Councilmember Huber?
I have a question of staff. About ten to fifteen years ago, we, the council at that time, passed an ordinance that said because in the older part of town, original Raymore, because those blocks were so small that, and the streets were so wide, because on, where the, named after the presidents, those, the right-of-ways were seventy-two feet, and those that were named after trees were sixty-six. Because that area was so small, that when the rest of it, when it developed, it would develop in the same way that the rest of the town would, so that instead of having the sixty-six and the seventy-two, the right-of-ways would only be about thirty to thirty-five feet, like the normal streets would be. Now, I can't see where, I looked up in the code, and I couldn't see where that's still in effect, with that ordinance is or not. But if it was, then that would mean then, also, there's no alleys in some of the rest of the town. So there's fourteen-foot alleys, and then you've got this other. So if you took that and divided it up among the different people in that area, instead of having six thousand square feet, you'd come closer to having seven thousand square feet for building purposes then. And I was checking to make sure that that was still true, because it seems that this area has been kind of, as far as the city of Raymore is concerned, has been benign neglect. And I'm very familiar with this area, and I am concerned about it. I think the project is excellent. I think we need it, because if you look at it, this is mixed-use, a perfect example of a mixed-use area. But I wanted to make sure that the, about the sixty-six and the seventy-two and the fourteen, that that would be revert back to the landowners.
Attempt to answer your question. The right-of-ways that you indicated, Monroe Street, Plum Street, correct, seventy-two-foot right-of-way in Monroe, sixty-six-foot on Plum. Those right-of-ways will not change as part of this project. Those right-of-ways are still consistent throughout the entire original town. And the concept plan that you have included in your packet respects those right-of-ways. Now, certainly the width of the street does not cover that entire right-of-way, so there's quite a bit of green space that would be between the edge of the pavement and the actual property line, but that's consistent through the entire original town neighborhood. There is an alley fourteen-foot wide along the west side of the property. They do intend to utilize a portion of that alley, which is allowable. They would have to improve that portion of the alley, but it would provide access to a trash enclosure that would be off of Plum Street. So I believe, I hope that answers your question, but again, nothing changes with the right-of-way as part of this project, because those right-of-ways are consistent throughout the entire original town.
Well, it would change when it's where the sidewalks go, because other areas in town have had sidewalks, and these people have been paying taxes for years, and they don't have sidewalks, they don't have some of the amenities that the rest of the town has. And so that bothers me, because I think they should be, the people in this area should not be treated differently than the people in some of the more affluent areas.
Just one comment. A big part of the original town neighborhood plan was exactly that, infrastructure. And one of the comments that they did not want to see, one of the things they didn't want to see is change to the current system that's there. So they did not support sidewalks on every street throughout the neighborhood. They did not want curbs on all their streets, they did not want storm sewers. Now, as part of the original town plan, we did incorporate sidewalk on the major roadways. So the Elm Street sidewalk that's been installed, that was part of the original town plan. Washington Street sidewalk was part of the original town plan. The last sidewalk segment that the city intends to install in that area would be the Olive Street, and that provides another east-west connection. We proposed from Monroe Street all the way through the original town. But the other street connections, the residents did not want to have sidewalks installed. That was directly out of the original town plan.
Other questions of staff?
I just have a couple of quick questions that have come up during this discussion. First of all, I'm wondering, when you invite people, is it only adjoining properties that are invited to the Good Neighbor Meetings? That's my first question. So I'd like to know how many of those notices were sent out? And second of all, several times we've talked about the cost of these being market rate. Do we actually have a number, thinking about how, you're saying, most of the people who tend to live in places like this are going to be single, maybe widowed women, are they really going to be affordable to the people we're saying that we're going to build them for?
Regarding the notification, we're required by statute to notify anybody that owns property within a hundred and eighty-five feet. So that's where we start with. And typically, I do, I do go beyond that if there is a particular neighborhood, perhaps it isn't touched by the hundred and eighty-five foot, or to extend to a reasonable distance. The code grants me the ability to do that. So in this particular case, it looks like we set notice to twenty-one properties, and that does go beyond the hundred and eighty-five feet. But we also do the signs. We post a sign on the property, so those that drive by are able to see the yellow sign. They're becoming kind of common now. I do get calls from those, and I did get calls on this request from individuals that didn't get the notice, but did see the sign. So we do make those attempts, and of course, the legal notice. But then generally, on the actual cost of the units, I know it was stated at the Good Neighbor Meeting what the projected rental cost would be, and it looks like, what I wrote down was between six hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty dollars. That was just a statement of the applicant at the Good Neighbor Meeting.
Other questions of staff? Okay, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments to under five minutes.
I'm Rachel Gratzky, 413 South Franklin Street in Raymore, in the original town right next to this property. I'm not the best public speaker, so apologize in advance, I get a little nervous. First of all, you keep mentioning that this is the applicant's investment. When I purchased my house seven years ago, that was my investment in Raymore and the original town. And we all know that multifamily properties bring down values for residents in the surrounding areas, sorry, and it's undesirable to live next to them. Can any of you imagine this being built in your backyard? Would you want a multifamily residence built in your backyard like this? Plus fifty-five and older really isn't that old. My parents are, would fit in that age range, and I would say they're not quiet. Fifty-five plus typically have college students. They might have kids that have to come back and live with them due to other circumstances. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be a quieter neighborhood. Also, when I first moved here several years ago, I attended an event at a local school where the city was asking original-town residents to give input to what they wanted to see in their community, which Mr. Catterett has referenced as the original town plan. One of the five areas that was addressed was zoning. The recommendations in this plan were formulated from input received by people in the community, and the goal was to create a vision for the neighborhood's future. When residents were asked about the land use, the majority showed a preference for traditional, single-family neighborhoods. They wanted a desire for a quiet neighborhood and had concerns about traffic. Excuse me. If the proposed rezoning is allowed, the city's really going to be ignoring the wishes of the original-town residents, which, as Mr. Catterett pointed out, he's followed their recommendations for not building the sidewalks and other amenities, but then you're going to go ahead and ignore the request to keep it to single-family housing. It just, it doesn't make sense for the people in that area. If you've read the comments in, from the Planning and Zoning Committee, I think you'll see that there was quite a crowd from our neighborhood that were not interested in this project. It's a great project. I have no problem with fifty-five-plus communities or multifamily residential areas. This just isn't the right location for it. I hope that they are able to build it somewhere else. So I think I covered everything that I wanted to say. It's just, I don't think this is the right change for this neighborhood with the original town and the original attentions that Raymore was founded on. Long time. Thanks.
Anybody else like to come forward? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill...
Thirty-sixty.
Thirty-sixty-two? Or thirty-six, thirty-sixty? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to the council approve Bill 3060, rezoning of Monroe Street.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3060. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, I wanted to show that I had an ex parte meeting with Roro Wilson on Tuesday before the election. I didn't know it was coming up here, but when he was going to vote, he mentioned it, and we did discuss this area. I don't know how many of you in the council have been in this area, but the map doesn't show it exactly correct. If you will look on, I think it's on page, well, I can't say right offhand, but anyway, where it says Rachel Circle, right back east of that is the Skyview fourplexes. So we're talking about an area that is mixed-use, and it already has quite a little bit of traffic on that other side. The cemetery is near there, there's a church there, there's the Old Township Barn is in that area, then there's a spot that is called Commercial there. So it is not a really, as a neighborhood, it is not a single-family neighborhood. It is a mixed-use neighborhood, because they have all, they have fourplexes, they don't have any duplexes, but they have fourplexes. Hidden Valley is on the, it's like a senior citizen. And then you've got the older, and you've got a lot of undeveloped land in here. So it seems to me that this would be a good project, because it's already mixed, and you're just adding another type of mix to it, which is the fifty-five. So there you've got single-family, you've got senior citizens, you've got the fifty-five, which is a little bit different in a way from senior citizen, and then you have the fourplexes. And the fourplexes has a lot of traffic already on it, but it doesn't follow. When I was down there looking at it and watching the traffic, I didn't see much traffic on this area, except for those that were going into Rachel. The rest of them that were going down in the Skyview, the fourplexes, were using Sunrise and the other streets. So I just want to make sure that you all understand that this is not a, quote, "single-family resident area." It is a mixed-use area, and as I said, the church. And not very far from that is where the farmer's market is going to be, or where the farmer's market really is. So you need to know those areas exist. Now, in some of the other part of the older town of Raymore, you don't have that many different uses, but you do have it here. And they've had it here ever since eighteen seventy-two.
I believe the page number was one thirty for the map, showing the R3A and the R1. Other discussion? Kevin? Sonya?
Thank you. I was going to yield to Sonya. I, if there's any one item on the agenda tonight that I've really struggled with, is this one. And like I've said earlier in the meeting tonight, I'm going to be honest with... And like I've said earlier in the meeting tonight, I'm going to be honest with the community and be honest with the developer. I appreciate you being here. I appreciate your honesty. I appreciate your candidness and the willingness to come before us with the guts, knowing that this was not well-received at the planning and zoning. I'm not going to apologize for that. Um, I don't think anybody needs to. I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did their job. Uh, whether I agree with them or not, I'm not going to second guess that. Uh, I appreciate what they did. I will say that I have some disagreements with it. So let me try to explain myself. I have read each and every comment from the Planning and Zoning Commissioner that was made during the public statement. And I kind of take some issue with it. The first question that I would have is, of those comments, they all said, "I agree with the previous comment." "I agree with the previous comment." "I agree with the previous comment." The first comment that I read was that there are children living in the area, and they don't think that a 55 and older community would be a good fit. Quite frankly, I'm kind of offended with that. And I'll leave it at that. Why have we come as a society that certain people don't belong next to us because we don't think so? I think it's kind of audacious and arrogant. I'll probably catch a lot of flack for my comments, but I'm willing to do that because I, I'm going to speak what I feel is right. My question, first question would be, if this wasn't a 55 and plus community that is being planned here, development, would that have just changed the argument? Well, we don't want that there. And I'll give you an example. Yes, I did have this built right across the street from my house, right behind Culvers. I'll give you some lessons on that one, too. Not this council, but the previous council voted on that project twice. The first one went down in flames. Second time came back, it went unanimously. Now, I'll give you my personal opinion why. It's because we could not legally deny it because they wasn't asking for a rezoning. They had the zoning. What did they build there? They built the very exact same thing that this gentleman's talking about building tonight. Except they sold it a lot more aggressively. That's why I asked the questions that I've asked. I didn't hear the gentleman say tonight, and this is where I really appreciate you, is that you didn't try to sell this saying you were going to market this to disabled veterans coming out of Afghanistan and pull on all of my heartstrings and this and that and everything else. I appreciate that. There was clamor during that time when I voted to not approve that project down there behind the Culvers. A lot of clamor that I was going to get sued individually. The city was going to get sued, and I was going to get sued individually because I denied it. I came back two weeks later and I changed my tune. I admit it. When I bought the house that I'm in, I didn't want to live next door to low-rank housing. Since I've been on the council, I've learned, I cannot discriminate against the type of housing that somebody wants to build that can legally build it there. The only thing that I see different tonight, sir, is that you don't have the zoning. And I can le, I, I can legally and ethically say no. Morally, in my heart and soul, I can't say no because the same thing that I was forced to do on the other side of town, that I had the same arguments plus more, that I had to do it. That's why I'm going to support this tonight, you know? And it is a very unusual situation tonight, and Jim spoke to it. And I, I, I'd hate to be sitting in Jim's seat over there, as uncomfortable as that has to be, to, to give a staff recommendation that is in conflict with what comes from the planning and zoning. That's a very uncomfortable thing for them to do. I agree with staff. I agree with staff. I respect the Planning and Zoning Commission, but that don't mean I agree with them. I'm not going to slam them. But I'm going to be consistent with myself, with the community, like I said earlier tonight, and I'm going to be honest. The only difference between this is that you don't have the zoning. The end result is the very same thing that I was forced to say yes to because it was legally required of me. And I just can't be inconsistent. I, I, I can't. I appreciate the fact that you are willing to spend money to improve our community. It is our goals as the, the council, the previous council. It'll come up again this year since we got a new council. We'll reevaluate those goals. But right now, what's on the book are the goals that Mr. Catterett spoke about, and I'm going to support those. That's why I ran for office this last time, was to support the, the policies that we set as a board to make our community what Mr. Boehner spoke about tonight so eloquently. And that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I noticed that the, uh, Community Development Department and Public Works have all said that this was a good project. So that means that then they have no objections to it. I did not see where the Planning and Zoning Commission gave any single reason why they turned it down. They just turned it down, but they didn't say why. I have a question for our, uh, attorney. When a developer meets all of the criteria for a single-family resident, we, or subdivision, we don't have the right to turn it down when they meet all of the requirements. Does the same thing hold true on a rezoning? If they have met all of the requirements to rezone it, and the staff, Public Works, and the Community Development say, "Yes, we want to see this go ahead," do we have options on it, or should we go ahead and automatically approve it? What does the statute say?
The statute, Chapter 89, gives great legislative discretion to the council in the matter of zoning. This is totally different than the plat that Mr. Kellogg discussed.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do.
This is zoning. There are factors, there was testimony before the Planning Commission that it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, that it was meant to be a residential area and is called for under the master plan as residential. And Mr. Catterett has itemized some of those factors for you as proposed findings of fact from the Planning Commission on pages 140, 141, and 142 of your packet. And so you do have the right to execute legislative discretion to decide if you think those are the correct findings of fact and should apply and affirm what the Planning Commission did, or if you don't, and you want to go with the findings of fact that Mr. Catterett has proposed and his staff recommendation. But this is not a case where you are required to vote legally and have no discretion. Zoning is when you do have legislative discretion. So this is a case for you to exercise your judgment.
Well, it seems to me to be, it seems to me to be a good project, and I would like to see the council vote for it to go forward because we already have three or four types of housing there, and I think one more would, would be a stabilizing effect.
Councilmember Burke?
I spent a little time looking at the map and looked at each of the comments from the individuals that lived around, um, that came to the meeting at the Planning and Zoning. And I made dots on a map and of the addresses that each person spoke. And almost every person that spoke, their backyard or their direct across the street, the people that spoke in opposition to it are the people that will look at it every day. To me, that has a lot of merit, um, in my decision-making. Uh, also, um, Ms. Grodsky is on Planning and Zoning. She did not, uh, vote. But I know that she has looked at it, looked at a lot of cases this way, and, uh, I actually chaired that meeting, uh, that, on Planning and Zoning, that dealt with the Culvers, the area behind Culvers. And that was a totally different animal, so there shouldn't be any comparison to that at all. But to me, the people that lived directly around this, their voices really speak highly to me. We've had other situations where we've allowed, uh, different residents to do things on their property. And the thing that spoke highly to me at those points were the residents that were directly subjected to the conditions of the change. And when none of them had opposition to it, I felt very eager to, to let someone make a change on their property. But when everyone that has been there is subjected to it, I don't think I can, I can support this.
Councilmember Abdul Ghawain?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it seems like this project has some, definitely some positives and some negatives. Um, I think it's great that it would be one story. The cost seems reasonable. Um, anyone who's watched me on the council for very long would know I'm very interested in the fact that they would have to work with the stormwater, um, and that not rezoning this at this point would make that not something that someone would have to do. But I am concerned, as Mr. Burke said, with the way that the community, that neighborhood sees this project. Um, I think it says a lot to me that out of 21 invitations, 10 people came to the Good Neighbor meeting. The people in this neighborhood are, are definitely concerned about what's going to be happening in their neighborhood. Um, of those 10 or maybe different people at that Planning and Zoning Commission, there were eight people who spoke out against this project. Um, I have to say I disagree a little bit with Mr. Kellogg because the first comment from the Planning and Zoning Commission brought up many issues, including water retention, sidewalks and sewers, traffic. Um, it seemed like there were a lot of issues that were brought up in, in that first comment that everyone else seemed to agree with and then add to. Um, I think this looks like a great project on paper. Um, but I have to say, as the representative of the people in Original Town in Ward Four, I, it doesn't seem like it's a good fit for this neighborhood. I know there's a, a new house going up in Old Town, Old Town, Original Town, that has a really neat wraparound porch, kind of sticking with that old, um, historic feel in the neighborhood. I, the pictures that we saw of this plan don't really seem to, to fit with that. And, and I hear what Ms. Huback is saying, that just a few streets over, you know, there are new houses, there are townhouses and such. Um, but, but those townhouses aren't part of Original Town, and they aren't, um, right across the street from single-family housing. So I feel like, even though a lot of the goals of the city that Mr. Catterett brought up are important to me and things that as a council and as a city staff we want to, to work toward, um, I'm not convinced that Original Town is the right place for this project. It sounds like a great project. There's definitely a need for this kind of housing in Raymore and, and our surrounding communities. But I'm not sure Original Town is the place for that. And again, as, as the person elected to represent the people in Ward Four, I feel like it's my responsibility to be their voice tonight and vote against this.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill 3060. Is there other comment? Councilmember?
You know what, I asked the applicant, um, kind of what the rationale was, uh, for the change here. And, and it was not designed for me, it was not my intention to pass judgment on the applicant. I was just trying to get an understanding, uh, for this. As I look at this, and as a previous member of P&amp;Z as well, um, you know, I, I tend to try to say that people have the right to do what they want with their own property, develop it the way they want to. Um, you know, maybe I want, uh, a certain feature in my neighborhood, but the neighbor doesn't, et cetera. So I, I struggled with this a little bit. Um, you know, unfortunately, thi, this is not a mixed-use scenario. It's actually just a lot of different zones around each other, which is not meaning the same thing. Um, but as we are looking at our commercial development here in, in our future, utilizing mixed-use zoning, it's difficult for me to say I don't like it when we are going to want it and utilize that. But it, that's not really what's happening here. I also agree with several members who said that, um, you know, including the developments on Sunset into this discussion is, it's a night and day argument. That's like saying we need to always consider Belton in all of Raymore's decisions because they abut Raymore. Um, logically, it doesn't fit. In this particular instance, what drives my concern here today is, um, Original Town Plan. Um, I'm not a member of Ward Four. I try to look at all issues of the city, but I'm, I'm less knowledgeable in that, in other wards than I am in my Ward Two. So the difficulty that I have here is I just don't see a huge impact going from six to seven properties up to 13, while at the same time, um, the way I typically try to scrutinize is I'm looking at, is the development consistent with the ongoing plan of that community? My problem is, is I have not read the Original Town Plan, and so I can't answer that specifically tonight. So as a result, I'm actually going to abstain because I feel at this point, while I see positives and I'm supportive of the applicant in, in principle, I can't say that the development actually fits the Original Town Plan because I haven't read the Original Town Plan. So as a result, I'm fearful if I vote yes, that I am supporting something without being fully knowledgeable on it. While at the same time, if I vote no, I may be actually inhibiting our progression in this discussion and feel that an abstention is more appropriate.
Other discussion? Councilmember?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If we're not, if, if we don't know what the Original Town Plan says, then we can't vote for or against, why don't we, um, not necessarily table it, but bring it up for another discussion after we've had a chance to look at the plan and see if it does fit?
We could do that. Take a motion.
We're told all the time that we need to do, uh, infills, the brownfields, to fill in the vacant spots. And when we get a chance to do it, we don't want to do it. And I've sat on this council enough times that when we have new subdivisions come in, somebody comes in and says, "We don't want them in our backyard because I want to be able to see the, the rabbits run and the coyotes, uh, out there, and if we build houses there, I can't see that." And so we say, "Well, sorry, but Raymore's got to grow, and we need that space." So I think we need to consider, is this good for the city of Raymore, or is it bad for the city of Raymore? I think it's good. It takes an area where these lots have been vacant for years, and now we have a chance to get them developed. And it seemed to me we ought to take advantage of it.
Mr. Mayor? Since I'm the one that mentioned abstention in, in reviewing the Original Town Plan, I will not be bringing a motion to table this. I believe in the two-week time, um, that for our next read, I would have more than enough time and, and I believe any council member would have enough time to review that plan. I, I believe that, um, the vote should stand today as a first read, and it would be an indicator to the applicant of our position. Um, and so therefore, I call the question.
Question's been called. All those in favor?
What is the vote? We're voting for it?
I'm sorry, sir, is this a vote to call the question?
Vote to call the question.
Should be. All, all in favor of to call the question?
All in favor of calling question.
Yes.
Opposed, one opposed, the rest in favor. The question's been called. Bill 3060 has been motioned and seconded. All, all those in favor? One, two. All those opposed? One, two, three, four. An abstain? One, one abstention. For, against, two in favor. First reading fails. Move on to Bill 3062. We have a reading of Bill 3062 by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill 3062 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri approving and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers, Inc. for the fiscal year 2015 micro-surfacing project in the amount of $210,620.48, and authorizing the city manager to approve change- orders within established budget constraints.
Staff report?
Thanks, sir. I'll call him, Mr. Grass.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this project is part of our annual street preservation project. It will involve micro-surfacing or placing a thin lift overlay on Lucy Webb Road, North Cass Parkway, Town Center Drive, North Park Drive, Rachel Circle, and Cedar Falls Court. We do recommend award of the contract to Vance Brothers in the amount of $210,620.48.
Questions of staff? Go ahead.
Mr. Grass, when you say a thin layer, I'm just, just because I'm the person that likes numbers, how, how thick is that? Quarter of an inch?
Quarter of an inch.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
When you do this, are we starting to make the surface below it smooth? Because we've done this stuff before. Fox Ridge has got to be a really terrible example of it. It's almost undrivable, but it just drives me crazy because at about thirty feet, you hit a little pit. Are we, are we...
This, this, this is a surface rejuvenation. It does not necessarily fill in. It fills in some minor, minor dips and depressions, but not, not the way that a full mill and overlay does.
I just kind of got that. When we do that sort of thing, it'll be smooth when it's done. It's just my personal opinion.
Other comments? Questions of staff? May I entertain a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-sixty-two?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve Bill thirty-sixty-two for the 2015 micro-surfacing project.
There's a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-sixty-two. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, passed unanimously. I have reading of Bill thirty-sixty-three by title only, please.
The first reading of Bill thirty-sixty-three by title only. An ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri approving an amendment to the fiscal year 2015 operating budget.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thanks, sir. Bill thirty-sixty-three requests council approval to eliminate the position of the community outreach coordinator, salary grade fourteen, and replace it with the position of a communications manager, salary grade eighteen, for the city of Raymore. The position for the community outreach coordinator that, that has existed until now was primarily responsible for being a reporter for the city. He reported our events, put together major issues for the city council in various formats, and also put together, helped in putting together the Raymore Review and Parks Guide. The city manager actually sees the new position as allowing us to, if you will, remake and improve our existing documents and bring them into the 21st century, as well as starting a whole new program for communications and branding for the city. The new position would have all of the old position's responsibility, but be responsible for all new resident communications, all of our social media. They would assist with public meetings. They would assist with council communications that were going out. And obviously, they would be responsible for upgrading all of our annual reports, the city budget book, to make them more user-friendly, more of an outreach effort for the city communications. Staff would recommend approval of the change.
Questions of staff? I'll entertain a motion to dispose of Bill thirty-sixty-three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill thirty-sixty-three, a budget amendment for a communications manager.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-sixty-three. Is there any discussion? Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a comment. One day late last week, I was headed to work, and I ran into Councilmember Holman at the Quick Trip. We were both getting coffee and soda, and we spoke briefly, and he, that's when he told me he would not be here tonight. And he asked if it would be possible to have his comments known. I said, I'd be glad to tell that, and so I'm asking for the privilege here, and I know you'll grant it, so I appreciate the opportunity. Mr. Holman did say that he is in support of this, even though he cannot vote, that he wanted to pass that information on to his colleagues, and I said I'd be glad to do it.
Okay. Any other discussion? There is a motion and a second to approve Bill thirty-sixty-three. All in favor? Two, three, four, five, six, seven. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. That concludes new business. Move on to public comments. Anybody like to make a public comment, please identify yourself for the record. Keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Seeing no one, I'll close the public comments. Move on to council communication. Council mayor communication. Councilmember Huback, you're the first tonight.
Mr. Mayor? Last year, we had our first council retreat, and it was very, it was very successful, and I'm suggesting that we have another one this year, and that the city manager figure out a date that we can have it. I recommend that we do it in June, because I believe that the reason for June was that it gave us plenty of time, and if we had anything, we wanted to go into the budget. That was one item. The second item has to do with charter and some maybe updates. There's two or three areas in the charter where we might want to take a look at it, and I suggest that the council do that to, to decide whether we want to call for a charter commission review or do some things with the council and doing themselves. If the council does it, the deadline for having anything on an April election would be, the first week was in January, and if we had it as a charter amendment commission, then they would have to have a year, and that would mean that they would have to have it in there by decisions made no later than June.
Councilmember Abdal Galou?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll take this opportunity to congratulate all my colleagues up here and the new members. Thanks to all who ran for the, this April election. I'd like to thank all the voters who took time to vote. It is an exercise in democracy, and it is our founding principles, and thank God we have that, that, that right to vote, and we are definitely God blessed for that. I've got a lot of things going through my mind, but I'm going to refrain from even going into it. I, it's not that it's not good, but sometimes it can be perceived as bad, and if you ain't got anything good to say, you may as well just shut your hole. So I think that's what I'll do. I'll just keep my mouth shut tonight. Thanks a lot.
Councilmember Morehead?
The comments flooding into my head. Okay, first of all, I also want to mirror the fact that I, I appreciate all the people who are up here. Councilmember Barber, welcome. Glad to have you aboard. Look forward to the next year. I also appreciated a recent editorial in a newspaper commenting about people not coming out and voting. I think that needs to be reread on an annual basis, but I do want to point out that while we celebrated tonight four people who were re-elected to represent citizens of Raymore, there were three very sincere efforts made by three other valued members of the community, and I wanted to appreciate their efforts and their willingness to participate and contribute to our community. Mr. Boehner, I think all of you would agree, gave a very sincere, touching statement as he left. I have to say, Councilmember Holman embarrassed me at the last work session because he wanted to compliment him on the way out because it was his last time, and, and I, I have to reiterate the statement that while Mr. Boehner was normally very quiet up on the dais and typically had no public comment to make or mayor council communication at the end, he was very interactive with all of us and participated a great deal. We enjoyed all of his input. We valued everything that he had to bring to the table. I know that Councilmember Barber will keep up with that, but at the same time, Mr. Boehner did set a very high bar, and he will be missed and appreciated, so I have nothing but fantastic things to say about Jason. I wish him well. I do want to go to a couple completely different notes. The jog with the dog last year, we got a light start to it because it rained on us and there was lightning, so a number of us had to corral the dogs into the Public Works Building, and I have to applaud all the dogs. They actually behaved better than the, than the humans, but they did eventually get out. I want to really encourage people to do it because they have a lot of treats and some very interesting things about the dogs. You can go visit with the Animal Control Department and learn a little more about that. It's just a great time, and it's, it's an excuse to get out with your dogs, so I really want to encourage people to do that. I also wish to finish off on a topic of civility. First of all, I, I'm really appreciative of the nine people that I get to work up on the dais here this next year, and I'm just really hoping that, you know, while we may disagree with positions, it's not really appropriate to disagree with people or criticize the individual members. And in fact, actually, based on a resolution we passed last year, it's in violation of our charter to actually directly criticize another member of the council, and that needs to be reminded, so I'm hoping that we can have a good year of civility on the council. You know, again, the discourse is valued. Actually, I enjoy some of the times I'm opposed, so I welcome that, but at the same time, personal attacks are, are not actually appropriate. And then I'll finish off with the following statement. I never resist the opportunity to either brag or embarrass my daughter, who is in the audience tonight. But the one thing I must say is, I'm really amazed and impressed with her. When we took a break in between the meetings, she had actually was working the room, talking to other people, and she found a resident that wasn't aware of what ward she was in and just had some questions. And my daughter was doing my job for me. I have no doubt in very soon future she will overtake me professionally and from a maturity standpoint and may end up on this dais, you know, as well, so, but I just was really impressed with that, and I always have to point that out when I can because I'm very proud of her. So with that, I'll, I'll stop. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to personally thank Councilman Boehner for his service the last two years. He was my personal councilman, and I appreciate his sacrifice and his service for those two years. Excuse me. I also want to make a comment. We, we had the candidate forum. We didn't get a chance to, to do a closing statement. I'm certainly not going to do that whole statement, but kind of following Councilman Boehner's shoes. I moved to Raymore fifteen years ago because of the housing and the school and the safety, but we stayed because of the people, the people of Raymore, and I want to thank the people of Raymore for this opportunity. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to quick congratulations to all the candidates, and I wanted to talk about a dream I had the other day, and I mentioned this to Mr. Fairborn, which we've already kind of had a laugh about. I had his pen, and I was writing with it, which I didn't quite understand how I got it or what I was writing, but it was just kind of funny. I thought I'd mention it.
Councilmember Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple weeks ago when we had our meeting, I wanted to thank the Parks Department for the touch of truck, and I forgot, and it happens every time. I was, oh, man, I forgot to thank somebody. But I also want to thank them for the Easter Egg Festival, and it was, it was great, and I got to find out who was, who the Easter Bunny was, and that was pretty surprising, so that was kind of fun. My children, we've been going there probably, I don't know, twelve years, maybe thirteen, and it's always a great time. Also, I wanted to thank all the Raymore residents that went out and voted for any candidate for any of the issues that were available to, to vote on, or just to look at and decide not to vote on something if they didn't feel that they had, you know, a good, good decision on that particular thing on the ballot. But that's definitely something that we need to challenge people to do more of and get out and double those numbers. We had a lot more people paying water bills than we had people voting that day. And that's not chastise anyone. That's just an observation, and I want to see, see more people come out, especially in those school board and, and city council elections. They're probably more important, in my opinion, than anything else that we do because locally is what drives everything that we do. Thank you.
All righty. My notes. Welcome, Councilmember Barber. Say goodbye to Councilmember Boehner. Jog with your dog. I'll be out with Boo, a hundred-and-five-pound white German shepherd.
We do have reason to go into executive session, sir.
The Old Town Overlay District, if that's available in electronic form, you may want to...
That is correct, sir.
Send it out to everybody. And I guess that's all they've got. So we have a reason to go into executive session to discuss litigation matters as authorized by six-ten dot oh-two-one subsection one. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss litigation matters as authorized by six-ten point zero-two-one subsection one.
Second.
A motion and a second to go into executive session. We'll call vote.
Councilmember Abdal Galou?
Yes.
Councilmember Barber?
Yes.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman, absent. Councilmember Huback?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
We'll retire to an executive session. We'll return only to dismiss the main meeting.